Good evening, I'd like to call to order this our reorganization meeting of January 12th, 2015. Would everybody please stand for the pledge? The Pledge of Allegiance, who is our, the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, in individual liberty and justice for all.
It's packed here at our reorg meeting.
The Thompson-Mazarella Park is going to give us a presentation on the 29th or the 26th, whenever our next meeting is. Does anybody have any announcements? I have a couple, which I'm happy to do first. On our, at our December 23rd meeting, or 22nd meeting, 22nd meeting, we held open the public hearing for the mining overlay zoning amendment. We received a lot of comments, and we still have a lot of work to do to answer those comments. So we will, we're in the process of digesting those comments and considering them carefully. The next session of the public hearing will be held after we've had a chance to further process everything, at a date yet to be set. People still email and call, and rest assured, we will reach out to individuals who've expressed interest and the press, and make sure that everybody is well aware of what we're doing. Anybody else? Okay. I'd like to open a public hearing for a local law authorizing the tax collector officer of the town of Reinbeck to enclose with the tax bill certain documentation of public interest. I'll make a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, Alan, would you like to talk about this?
Yeah, the thing we're going to include this year is the notice to the resident, to the property owners essentially, that they're, we are passing a law, a local law, to enforce county law requiring clear labeling of properties so that the 911 responders will be able to find their property as quickly as possible. I have the letter, you have the letter in front of you, there are a couple of changes. One of them is for an added sentence that gives them the phone number to call to verify that they have the correct enhanced 911 address for their property. And the other thing is, the actual law that we're, is something we're going to pass in a future meeting, but was, we're going to name enforcement officer, we're not going to do that today, right?
Yes, we have a public hearing scheduled for this, and we can close it and pass it.
Okay, good, so we close it today. I didn't see it on the agenda.
No, I'm confused, the, the, the local, it's my understanding the local law you're passing is one that allows mailers to go into.
Yes.
That's correct.
And we need-
But we also need to pass a law that says that the zoning-
That'll be at our next meeting.
-enforcement officer is the enforcement officer for the 911 dress labeling, and his, the fine will be whatever, for the first offense.
Yeah, the, the local law that we're passing tonight, I think I was confused, I'm probably confused too, is to allow us to put things in tax notices.
So this, this-
We're doing it specifically for this purpose, but we can also do other things in the future as well.
And this letter will refer to the local law as something we're going to do in the future, that we're intending to do at the next meeting, yes? So I, I had to ask for your agreement to this letter ahead of time, but basically, by sending this letter, we're all, we're saying we're going to pass this law. We can, we can discuss the details when we, when we-
I think we're, I think, I'm certainly on board with it, it's something we've talked about, our emergency services coordinators have come to us and asked us to do it.
Yeah, basically, we're going to enclose this with the tax bills to save something like a thousand dollars in postage, which we'll, instead of mailing it separately. All we're doing essentially is creating the mechanism to enforce accounting law that requires clear labeling of the, of property so that the 911 responders can find them. Basically it.
The public hearing we're having tonight is a local law authorizing the tax collector to enclose with tax bills certain documentation of public interest, and-
Which is as an example.
Yes. Is there any comment or questions? I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. Onto our-
So, do we need a resolution to say that this can go into the tax bills? This is what the plan is. When do the tax bills go out, Joan?
23rd.
I'm hoping it's something out a week from five.
So that's before our next meeting?
Right.
So I think we just need a resolution authorizing this-
Well, I think you should probably vote on the local law first.
We, we just did.
No, we closed the public hearing.
You should close the public hearing.
Let's vote on the law.
It's 2015047.
Resolution 2015047, a local law authorizing the tax collection officer of the town of Reinbeck to enclose with tax bills certain documentation of public interest. I'll make a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
On your new business, I'll bring up a resolution to approve this law.
Sure.
As you meant.
Sure, thank you.
You don't need a roll call vote for a law?
For a local law, not to my knowledge, but we can do it.
Why don't we just do it in case he needs a roll call vote on the law?
Should I open this again? We've closed it and voted on it.
We take a roll call vote.
Okay. Vote by roll call, Deputy Supervisor Gel?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Counselperson Washburn?
Aye.
Elaine?
Yep.
Supervisor Spinzia?
Aye.
Unanimously passed. Okay. Moving on one more time. Getting off to a rocky start here. Resolution 2015-001, order of business for the town board meetings in 2005. I'll make a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Pretty much the same as last year, and every year before then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for resolution 2015-002, a shelter contract with Columbia Green Humane Society, SPCA. May I have a second?
Second.
This is a contract to allow them to help us with animal control.
This is the cooperative?
No.
No.
This is in the event that an animal is not picked up, that straight up is not claimed.
In the long-
They're going to-
Yeah. We've had this in effect here for a while.
Okay, got you.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-003, I'll make a motion, the town board meeting dates and times and locations for 2015, may I have a second?
Sorry.
Of course, the meetings will be here, and they'll be at 6:15. In front of you is a-
Did you, I'm sorry, did you say 6:15?
6:45. I did say 6:15. There are a couple, I think I'd like to make a motion to amend this, may I have a second?
Second.
What's the motion?
To, we have on here a couple of dates that, we have December 15th, which is a Tuesday, I think we can move that to Monday the 14th, if you're all in agreement.
Right, yeah.
And we have a meeting for December 28th, that's that week between Christmas and New Year, I'd like to move that we strike that.
Yep.
And I'd also like to set January 11th, 2016, as our reorg meeting.
Just a discussion of that.
Let me just also note that we have only three meetings, one meeting for June, July, and August scheduled.
Right, I, again, disagree with that. I don't think we should be taking it down to one meeting, that town business goes on, people are on vacation, that's fine. The, as long as we have a quorum, we should discuss business. I think every year when this comes up, and we actually do it in practice, we call a lot of special meetings, and we have a huge stack of things in front of us of bills to approve. I don't see why we should be treating ourselves differently than the employees of the town who come in and do their regular duties during the summer, so I think we should schedule our usual two meetings. And then let me come back to December.
Sure.
Because I don't think we should do just one meeting in December, and we should schedule a second meeting in the twenties, maybe two days before Christmas. There is usually a lot of moving on the budget. Shelley has always claimed she needed a day closer to the end of the year. We used to have something between Christmas and New Years, and apparently that's not needed by Shelley because she got by this year, but I think we should at least schedule something in December in the twenties. So maybe we can take these in order, and let's talk about the summer first.
All right, let me just make a case and remind everybody that before the comp plan, we did one meeting a month. We're a class of, you know, town of the second class, I took a poll of all the other supervisors in the county, everybody goes to a summer schedule. Most towns with a budget our size, and a town of our population, have fewer meetings than we have. Last year, we scheduled in addition seventeen special meetings, budget works, seven budget meetings, so there's plenty of opportunity to get town business done. That's all I have.
See, I think it's a bad idea to do it through special meetings, because those of us who have nine to five jobs, don't get a chance to go to those, that those special meetings are often during the day.
We didn't have day meetings this year, we had very-
Part day?
We had very few last year.
Special meetings, I thought you said we just had-
We had very few during the day, we were all mindful of everyone's schedule.
Can I just add something to that? I don't, I don't mind doing it in one day in the summertime, it doesn't, you know, I don't have any problem with that, I'm pretty neutral about this issue in general, but I just want to say that, besides, obviously, we're talking about me when we talk about the person who's working full-time, but I just want to say for the record that it's not just me, it's, it's the public.
Yeah.
A lot of working-class people can't be here for special meetings that they might be interested in attending. To me, that's just as important, if not more important, than my being able to be here. So, you know, whenever we do have special meetings, I always appreciate it if we can do it in the evening, not just for myself, but for the working people who might want to come.
The other thing, can I just say, I checked with Shelley, Shelley has a new module on her accounting software, it was more, it's easier for her to close out the month with, with one meeting a month, so she's fine with that. She's fine with one meeting in December, she's fine with one meeting in the summer.
Why don't put an extra, put back the first meeting in June?
I don't, I move not to.
I just have a question, why, why the Tuesdays? I'm just curious to know.
Because they're holidays, one's Memorial Day.
Memorial Day.
Oh, okay.
And October is-
Well, Columbus Day is usually on the 14th, I thought, that's why I was all confused.
It's Monday.
Which would be the, oh, it's always on a Monday, I always thought it was the number day. Okay, that explains it, thank you.
Why don't we decide what we want to do in June, as to two meetings or one meeting?
I'd like to stick to one, anybody else?
We take a vote.
Happy with one.
I'm happy with one.
Okay, how about December, one meeting in December?
Fine, with that too.
Great, and January 11th is our reorg meeting? Okay, so this-
Do we decide anything about December?
We're moving December to the 14th, we're not having a second meeting, and our reorg meeting is on the 11th.
Do we take a vote on December?
I don't think so, I think we all just agreed, three of us agreed.
Okay.
So this is amended to say December 14th, we're striking the 28th, and we're adding January, I believe it's 11th, as our 2016 reorg. So may I have a motion to pass the amendment to the resolution?
Motion.
And a second, I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, passes, so moved.
I'd say may as well.
Okay. May I have a motion, could you please not call out from, thank you.
That's fine.
We, we passed with a, an, a, may I have a, I'll make a motion to vote on the open resolution for the town board meeting dates, times, and locations for 2015, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
I'm sorry, what are we voting on?
We had an amendment to the resolution, which we voted on, and now we're voting on the open resolution.
Oh, okay.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Yes. The same reason that I dissented on the amendment.
Well, you dissented on the revision to the amendment, so you're not voting to set meeting dates. Thank you. The, the motion passes. Resolution 2015-004, town holiday schedule for 2015, I'll make a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
It's eleven days that we usually close to holiday schedule per employee handbook. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-005, official newspapers, Daily Friedman and the River Chronicle, may I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 015-006, naming the official banks, M&amp;T and Citizens, may I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any, aye, any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-007, petty cash funds, I'll make a motion?
Motion, second.
And, thank you, and a second. I'd also like to make a motion to amend this, may I have a second?
Second.
In 2014, we changed the highway's petty cash from 100 to 200 because they needed, they get their asphalt across the river, and they need more than sometimes this in the paving seasons, so I'd like to amend highway to 200.
Do you get them an easy pass?
I don't think so. Kathy asked that we keep this at 200.
I thought we did do an easy pass, but I would still increase it to 200, it's so small. But I think she now has an easy pass.
All in favor of amending the resolution?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Now we have to vote on the resolution to approve the petty cash funds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-008, authorizing the supervisor to file the annual report with the state controller, I'll make a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
To file our AUD within 90 days of the closing fiscal year. This says 2014, it's 2015. It's for this, it's for last year?
Yeah, it's the closing within 90 days of 2014 fiscal year.
Okay, for, got it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-009, setting our annual salary schedule, I'll make a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
I'd also like to make a motion to amend this, there are two errors that were brought to my attention. One is labor halfway down underneath supervisors of buildings and grounds, we have actually approved a $12 an hour rate for that.
Is that, it's hard to read across, is that 1391?
Yes.
So it goes to 12?
Yes. And then labor at the end, second from the top, it should say, not temporary as needed, it should say highway.
Or the other top, yes.
Okay, temporary is needed, what should that one say?
Labor slash highway.
And these are all annual, annual salaries, except for the, the three of them are by the hour, they probably ought to be noted that way.
Many of them are by the hour.
Yeah, a bunch of them.
Okay, all the hourly, excuse me.
Yes.
All the ones that are hourly, they're noted.
Is there any further discussion? We're voting on the amendments.
Yeah, I guess we just want to vote on this.
I think we did, I think Elaine made one.
If we can't pass it, we gotta change it now, I don't think it'll be confusing.
Okay.
Next year should say, okay.
Hour, right.
All in favor for the amending amendments to the resolution? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendments are passed, now we have to vote on the resolution. All in favor of the salaries, passing the salary schedule for 2015? Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-010, appointing town board liaisons to committees, departments, and boards. I'll make a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
For the public, Joe is going to, and if anybody has any issues with this, we should talk about it now, if you want to swap, can they just go through person by person? Joe's going to take Buildings and Grounds, Highway, Open Space Affordable Housing, Planning Board, Zoning Enforcement Officer, and Historical Preservation with SHARE. Fernandez is taking the Committee of the Aging, we're going, going to also see at a later date if they will take on the scheduling of the senior van drivers, Animal Control Officer, Cemetery Committee, Panda, and Recreation with SHARE and Waterfront. Alan is taking IT Technology and Web, Thompson-Mazarella Park Committee, the Town Historian, Artifacts and Equipment House, we sort of lumped that all together, Northern Duchess Alliance, Historic Preservation with Joe, and Recreation with Elaine. I am, be working with the assessors, the bookkeeper on the budget, the website with the clerks, emergency services, the farmer's market, Reinbeck Collaboration, Fire Departments and Fire Protection Districts consolidation, also emergency services, it doesn't say that here, and I'm doing the Fire Protection District consolidation with Bruce, I'm doing emergency services, and Vandenberg Cove Sewer District with Bruce. Bruce will be doing the Board of Assessment Review, Building Inspector, Conservation Advisory Board, Fire Departments, Protection Districts consolidation with me, Justice Courts, Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Vandenberg Cove Sewer District. Everybody okay with this?
Yeah, I'm okay with it, I have a couple of things. Animal Control Officer, you know, I recently had a conversation with Roger about this because really it should be listed as Dog Control Officer.
Yeah, you're right.
Because he gets calls from people about their birds, about their cats, about their fish, I mean, he's really, is a dog control officer, and I'd be happy to present a resolution at the next meeting, maybe changing that name because he's getting a lot of calls that he shouldn't.
I think it, I think the resolution does say that, and you should check it.
Okay.
Because I recently had made this mistake, because a lot of things are, we referred to it as Animal Control Officer, but in our law, I think it is Dog Control Officer.
It is Dog Control, yeah.
I think the clerk slipped it up, yeah. So I think we're okay with that.
So I'll overlook the original resolution, and if it's not clear, I'll bring the resolution to make sure.
Yeah, we, we only enforce dogs.
Right, exactly.
Not wild fish.
Yeah, I was going to say, what kind of trouble do people have with fish?
You'd be surprised. They stink after three days.
It's horrible, I'd hurt you.
And, and anything else, Elaine?
Just, I have a general question for you, actually, and I'm just putting it out there as a question. You have assessors in yours, but do you find that to be a conflict of interest considering you're in real estate? You don't think it's a conflict of interest? Okay.
Why would it be? I don't tell them what to do.
They assess property values.
Yeah, but I don't interfere, I don't come between them and what they do, I bring their business to the board, or-
Okay.
They're the assessors.
Yeah, I know, it just, it just seems, it just feels like a conflict of interest to me, just because of the real estate.
In theory, we all have somewhat the same conflict.
If you're a homeowner, if you have conflict of interest by that, by that definition.
Yeah, just, it feels a little different to me, but that's, but that's fine.
Yeah, I don't influence them, I don't tell them how to conduct their business, I, it's practical matters. They're elected, they, they do it. Anything else?
No.
Bruce is, thank you for your long service on rec, let's see how it goes.
Well, I figured it's good now because I'm here, if anybody gets in trouble.
You're here.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, yeah.
Because you have so much experience.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-011, creating the position of Deputy Supervisor. I'll make a motion, may I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-012, authorizing designation of bookkeeper, may I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Want it for a second?
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-013, appointing the zoning administrator, Ron Evangelista, may I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
We'd be appointing Ron for the administrator, as the administrator for 2015. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-014, appointing Ed Matic as our fire inspector, may I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-015, appointing Ed Matic as our building inspector two, may I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-016, appointing John Gautier and Joan Winnie as our tax collector and Deputy Tax Collector respectively. I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. May I have a motion for resolution 2015-017, appointing John Gautier as our records manager?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. May I have a motion for resolution 2015-018, appointing Henry Campbell and Darren Forbes as our coordinators for our emergency management for the town?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Thank them again for serving, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Here we go, resolution 2015-019, appointing Roger Newkirk as our Dog Control Officer. Not cats, not llamas, dogs. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for resolution 2015-020, appointing Nancy Kelly as our town historian.
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved.
Second Nancy for her service. Did you, she just issued an annual report?
I didn't, I didn't get it.
She sent it to John. Could you circulate? You want me to circulate?
Well, we're probably gonna get all the annual reports at one time. Is that with money?
She doesn't take.
She doesn't collect money. This is the state of history in Reinbeck.
Yeah.
It's alive and well.
Her history is continuing.
Yes. I lost myself for a second. Resolution 2015-020, appointing Warren Raplansky as our Town Attorney for $165 an hour. I have a motion. I have one. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. May I have a motion to appoint John Lyons as our Planning and Zoning Board Attorney at the rate of $125 to the town? Second?
Second. But this will, I guess we'll need a supplemental resolution because there's a different rate for town and non-town.
Do you want to make a motion to amend the resolution?
I, 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 I think we gotta check with him. I think, I just want to be sure of what the amounts are. So if we can pass this, or you can hold it.
Let's pass this and then make a note on next meeting, bring up a resolution. You're talking about the escrow bill, right?
Yeah.
I think this is at $125 an hour plus expenses. If we pass this, we will have to pass another.
Yeah, so this is for town business, escrow business. We have to pass another resolution.
Or amend this. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2015-023, appointing Carrie Amashada as our Special Prosecutor for the town at a fee of $100 per hour or $350 per court session, whichever is less. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. May I have a motion to appoint Karen Hagstrom as our Suciary Attorney at the rate of $150 an hour?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. May I have a motion to appoint our Planning and Zoning Consulting Engineer? Resolution 2015-025.
Motion.
And a second? I'll second it. I'd like to make a motion to amend this. May I have a second?
Second.
The amendment to this is it's Morrison Associates, not Weston and Sampson. Weston was for the town last year. And I guess we'll have to do that at the next meeting, but Morris is the Planning and Zoning Board's Consulting Engineer. All in favor of amending the resolution?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. All in favor of passing Resolution 2015 to appoint Morris as our Engineer for Planning and Zoning? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-026, appointing Art Broad Planners East as the Planner for the town. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
On this one, also, one, it doesn't have any rate in here. We probably should have a rate. And again, it's a split rate. I don't know if you want to maybe just table this so we have a complete resolution.
They have a meeting at the next.
Next meeting.
They have a meeting before we do. We should pass this. I'm sure nothing's changed with his rate, but we can, you can bring one.
Okay, we can pass it, but then we should pass a resolution with his rate.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-027, appointments to the Vandenberg Cove Sewer District Committee. We are appointing Jim Baker with thanks and Dan Kilpatrick with thanks. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. May I have a motion for an appointment to the Conservation Advisory Board, Corinna Borden?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Appointing her for a two-year term to expire the end of 2016. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-029, appointments to the Website Committee. May I have a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
We are appointing Andrew Shulkin as the Chair, and Dave Clipon, Kathy Consella will continue serving. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-030, appointments to the Aging Committee. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
It's the same committee. We're appointing June Blum, Marc de Blazi, Michelle Feller, Yolanda Cake, Carol Leib, Nina Lynch, Dory McKibben, and Beverly Sloan. And Tom Trow.
Yeah, you know, I noticed he's down on the resolve section, but I don't see him in the opening with the rest.
That's fine.
Okay. Okay.
All, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-031, appointments to the Cemetery Committee. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
For the public, we are reappointing Dave Queen for a two-year term. Suzanne Kelly is reappointed as the Chair, and Alan Kuhn, Mickey Hagerty, and Paul Niederkorn will continue in serving. Dave Queen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Appointments to Open Space Affordable Housing Committee, Resolution 015-033. May I have a motion? And a second? Second?
Second.
Second, thank you.
Which one is this?
Affordable Housing.
Did you do, do we do Historic Structures?
I'll have to come back to that. For the public, resolved that Sue Hartshorn, Christopher Lipscomb, Sally Mazarella, Jonathan Mench are reappointed to the Committee for two-year terms, and Christopher and Jonathan are reappointed as co-chairs for the Committee. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Because we, we lost our tabs, so I got confused. Resolution 2015-032, may I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
These are appointments to the Historic Structures Committee. We are appointing Keith Arnt, Louise Gecko, Kathy Hammer, Nancy Kelly, Sally Mazarella, Jonathan Mench, David Miller, Melanie Moore, Warren Smith, and Michael Trimble to the Historic Structures Committee. And Sharon Sharad. And Melanie Moore is the Chair. Any further discussion? Large Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. May I have a motion for 015-035, appointments to the Recreation Committee?
You missed 34.
Okay, I'll go back. May I have? It's the, it's the paper tabs. 015-035 Recreation Committee. I'll make a motion. Do I have a second?
No, you still missed, I'm sorry.
I will go back.
You still missed the Northern Duchess Alliance?
I will go back.
Okay.
I have this. I read it. Just motion it. Thank you. We're, we're appointing Joe Kupiak and Linda Murray to another three-year term. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-034, appointing Representative to the Northern Duchess Alliance. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
We're appointing Melanie Moore, who I believe is also the President of that, who's been serving on it for quite a few years. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 015-036, holding over seats on the Thompson-Mazarella Park. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
I think the only reason this is held over is because we didn't hear or didn't know that everyone still wanted to continue, so Alan, will you follow up on that for the next meeting? Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just a point. Alan, the way this works is the town has a couple of seats. Village has a couple of seats, and then there's like the Winneken, the school. So we only have a couple of seats. We have to worry about two towns.
Who are the current town reps?
You have to, the clerk has all, all that information. We have a list of the appointments and a list of, if you pull the resolution, who has to serve.
Right, but Bruce, you're one of the, anymore?
You were the town rep?
No, I was at the Aza. I was the village rep for a while.
He's done it all. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Did we pass that already? Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-037, appointments to the Waterfront Committee. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second? I'll second it. We're appointing Herman Teason and Patricia Nguyen, reappointed to two-year terms.
Yeah, except that Patricia, I'm gonna have to get some clarification from because Patricia has actually, she's, she wants to resign as Chair. However, she's been involved with the process of the LRC, the waterfront, the feasibility study, yes. And she'd like to stay involved with that through completion. So I'm not sure what the protocol is, whether she can step down but still be sort of the lead person on that until a new Chair is designated. I mean, they have.
We're appointing her as a Chair with this, too. Does she not want to be the Chair?
She doesn't want to be the Chair. She wants to step down, but she wants to stay involved with the LRC plan.
Okay.
She's just staying on the Committee, not as Chair.
Yeah, I don't even know. I, I think she just, my understanding from her is that she wants to stay involved to see the project through, the plan for the waterfront. I don't know that that means she's going to be an active participant on the Waterfront Committee. I know that she's, she's done its business for herself, and I know she's very, very busy with that. So I don't know that she has the time available or more, but she, she definitely wants to stay involved through completion of the feasibility study and plan.
Why don't we just hold this over? Get it clarified?
Okay.
We have an open resolution on the floor, so would you like to make amendment to, hold it over?
Yeah.
Second? All in favor of holding it over?
Aye.
Aye. We have to close the other resolution? Are we not voting that in? All in favor of not doing this? Table it? We're tabling this?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good idea.
Resolution 2015-038. I'll make a motion to hire an auditor for certain town departments. May I have a second?
You missed one last minute.
I'll go back. It's the paper tabs. May I have a second?
Second.
All right, this is Resolution. Lori Doty, we hired her last year. I think we were all pretty happy with it. And she's coming back this year to audit Buildings, Cemetery, Highway, the Justice Courts, Planning, Recreation, Town Clerk and Zoning, all the departments that take in money. Any further discussion?
I think the only thing, I don't know if it has to be in the resolution, she has a fee attached. And I assume we're, well, okay, we're approving the amount, I think, in the warehouse. That's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. All right, let's go back for the Resolution 2015-038. I'll make a motion to appoint the Chair of the Board of Assessors, Emery Ruger to the Chair of the Board of Assessors. May I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Oh, okay. Resolution 2015-040. Proving preliminary accounts payable of 2014 abstracts VAP 1, VAP 71, 49 checks totaling $59,454.90. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-041, approving preliminary abstracts 1A of 2015, vouchers 72 through 75, four checks totaling $1,552.47. May I have a motion? And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 2015-042, approving our budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-043, setting the public hearing for the 2015 fire contracts. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
We're going to have a public hearing on the 26th of January at 7:00 PM to approve our fire contracts. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just a question.
Question and a comment.
Oh, I was gonna say, I assume these are the amounts we put in the budget?
Yes.
I, I thought we did it already when we, when we accepted their contracts.
I don't think we had a public hearing.
I think we did.
Clerk's saying no.
Okay. Well, we should have. Because we had, then we'd have no coverage now. Okay, never mind.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-044, Highway Department Sweeper Insurance Settlement. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or discussion?
Well, obviously, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna go into what happened, but this, this thing was purchased in 2004 from the general fund, right? And if you look at the, the contract, the state, the county bid, we get another, an additional nine years of life by renting one from, from what we have now rather than spending the money on, on fixing the total sweeper. So has anyone looked at that?
Kathy looked at all options. And this is her recommendation, that we take the insurance settlement. I believe that there was an accident with this. It fell into a culvert and the frame was bent. The insurance company offered us $60,000 for it, which she recommended we take. And we can buy it back to them for $3,000, and she believes that she can have it fixed for 20. So we would be paying for it to be fixed and having $37,000 returned to the equipment.
So, so the rental, the rate of annual rental for this has been evaluated, and the additional nine years of life doesn't matter? She's evaluated that, right?
I believe she's looked at everything.
They have to rent it, rent it to us and pay us to take it in order for it to be better.
Make it 37,000.
It wouldn't line up with, with, with the 30,000-plus dollars.
Well, he's saying use the money from the insurance claim. Well, he's saying use the money from the insurance claim to rent, but she, she's strapped for labor. She needs to be able to fit this in whenever she can. She doesn't have, she's staffed to, she's staffed to, not, you know, to core. So how can she, you know, she's got half the day, she's got a sweeper there with very low mileage on it, low use hours, that she could send someone out to do a road. I think we don't have the luxury of planning ahead for projects.
Okay. But it's my understanding that she can buy from the insurance company, in effect, the damaged sweeper for $2,000.
Two or three, yeah. And it'll cost $20,000 too?
The resolution says 2,000. That's what we're-
And that's what it is.
That's what we're approving. And the settlement would be $59,000, and we're gonna take off 2,000. So we're gonna get a check for $57,000. And she thinks she can repair it for a lot cheaper than that, and we'll have money.
We'll have money. We'll have the sweeper that we know, that's known to us. It's got very low, very little-
Is, is it, what, a total vehicle, is it gonna be covered by insurance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I think you're probably paying a discounted amount, because, you know-
It'll be covered for, I mean, whatever it's worth, it'll be covered for.
Right, right. That's what we're gonna get as to, presumably, insurance company will pay us the market value.
No, it doesn't go like that. It goes for, it depends on how long we've had it. Any vehicle older than 10 years, it changes.
Right. We are saying exactly the same thing in different words.
So we've looked into all of it. This is her recommendation. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. So moved. Resolution 2015045. Hiring a part-time planning board secretary. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
We're hiring Brennan Kearney as our part-time planning board secretary at her existing salary. Her total hours, Brennan is going to be secretary to the planning board and the zoning board of appeals and the zoning enforcement officer, not to exceed 26 hours a week. She's taking over from Joan Winnie, who will now be full-time with the clerk's office. All planning and zoning will be done by Brennan. She's been doing it for last year, and I think she's up to speed, and we wish her luck. It's a big change for the town hall, too, to have, not have it in the clerk's office. So I'm looking forward to that. Any further discussion?
I think it's a great idea, and I would think to have that, because they're, they work compatible together. It makes sense.
The thing that the public will have to get used to is they don't have five-day-a-week access to a planning board secretary as they did with Joan, because she was here five days a week. So it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, from 9 until 3. And then she does the meeting hours as well. But I think, you know, it's a part-time job. She's not full-time access.
Can I ask a general question related to that? Because I recently had a constituent contacting me about information that they weren't aware of. But all the notices were sent. I mean, Brennan sent everything as she's supposed to. The one thing I was wondering is, you know, the Rhineback blog, that community blog, it's really wonderful. And, you know, frankly, we still have a long way to go with our website. It's not the most user-friendly. People have a hard time finding information they're looking for. And I'm wondering if it could be a part of the notifications that go out, in addition to the papers and the website, if they could include the community blog. It's just, I mean, I talked to Brennan about it, and she's like, it's easy enough to do. It's just a copy and paste. But I feel like it's another way to get information to the public that they might be able to access more easily than they're able to access in other ways. So I just wanted to find out how everybody felt about that, and if we could just add that. She said she thought it'd be easy enough to do.
Clerks do it, so.
So, so everybody's fine with that? That she does that?
Well, I guess I don't understand that in our zoning law, there are specific provisions with respect to who gets notice. Are we suggesting an amendment to the zoning law?
No, no, it's not. She, she satisfies all those requirements. She, she does what she's supposed to. The thing is, it's just another way to get information out to the public in a venue that seems like a lot of people use the community forum. But the noticing, sometimes people, their website, they look on the website for information. They have a hard time. Like, I have a hard time sometimes.
You know, Lex, can we vote on the amendment? And I think this is like, I have no problem with it. I mean, I think it's a great idea. It's up to the secretary as the clerk does it.
Okay.
Why don't you talk to Brennan?
Well, the problem I have with it is that if you are gonna ask her to do it, and she slips up and doesn't do it, somebody could say there's an invalid action by either the planning board or the zoning law. I think it-
No, because according to the zoning law, she'd still be doing what she's required to do. This would be, just be like a gratuitous extra step to like get more information out to the public. I don't think it-
Right. As I say, no good deed is unpunished. And if you have a procedure where you're gonna do it and you don't do it, I think you're opening yourself up to a possible lawsuit. Maybe we ought to get advice-
But it's not a procedure. It would just be-
Could we get advice, maybe, from the town attorney on this as to whether-
I'll be happy to contact him.
And what steps?
It's actually, it should be the planning, it should be the planning board attorney. Can, we have an open resolution, an open resolution on the board to hire Brennan Kearney as our part-time planning board secretary. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Welcome aboard again, Brennan. Resolution 2015046, approving our annual 284 agreement for the expenditure of highway monies. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second? Any discussion? That's exactly what we approved in the budget. General repairs, road improvements, specific roads and one to be determined. We had some extra money. Copy of the agreement. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Is there any further business?
Yeah, I'd actually like to mention something. Usually, we have the new business on here. It wasn't on here. So I'd really like to talk to the board about how we're gonna handle the Ethics Board, because they, they're not on here. Personally, I'm of the mindset that it would be a good thing to have a liaison to the Ethics Board.
I think you have to read the law establishing it. I don't think it allows one.
I mean, I understand the argument about it, about as far as, you know, there could potentially be a conflict of interest. And I will read back on that, but my, my main concern, and maybe the liaison isn't the way to address it, but my main concern is two different things that happened. One is that there was a case earlier this year before the Ethics Board, and only two of the five board members were informed. Three of them were not. There was a written determination that I know I never received, and as a board member, I think I should have. And then I also was told by one of the members of the Ethics Board that she was not very clear about how the process of meetings supposed to work. So there's a lot of education, and I think it's an important board.
I think you have to read the state law. I think it's pretty clear. They liaise with our town attorney, and the attorneys, we also send them to the Association of Town. I think we have to stay at arm's length.
There was no case before the Ethics Board. A member of this board asked for written advice from them.
Not a case.
That's what she can say.
And it was written advice rendered.
Right. She called it a determination.
What?
She called it a determination was made. All I'm saying is-
A determination, but-
But it wasn't shared with the board.
But I think, you know, if they're confused about something, then the entire board ought to have a meeting with them. We can do it in the context, because I think we're gonna be appointing some new members to the Ethics Board. And maybe we could have a meeting, because I don't know why they're confused.
I think that would be a great idea. I think that would be a wonderful way to handle it, is to sit down as a board with the Ethics Board and, and talk to them and answer their questions, because my understanding is they're, they're not clear about how the process works. And I think it's a very important board. And frankly, I, I think that whatever happened over the fall should have been shared with the entire board.
I think it was. We all got copies.
I didn't get anything. Did you, Bruce? Did you receive anything about it?
I don't remember anything.
Did you, Alan?
Not that I recall.
Right. So, I mean, I, because I had asked them when I first heard about it, because I thought, oh, maybe I missed it. Sometimes that happens. You miss things in your email. But none of the three of us knew about it, and I only found out completely on accident. So I just think it's important. So I just wanna know that.
But look, I think when we sit down, that's one of the things we can talk to them about. I'm not sure that, with your conclusion, but we ought to sit down and talk to them.
Yeah. And I'm just reflecting the concerns that were brought to me. I mean, that's, you know, that's, that's why I wanted to bring it to the board. So, you know, however it is handled, but I, I think they need some information and, you know, some assistance from us.
We'll be appointing the-
We should probably have our town attorney there since he, we should probably have our town attorney there since he is-
Well, the Ethics Board, the statute says that he shall be the counselor of the Ethics Board. So if they had a question and they actually read the law, they should know. If they have questions, they should go to the town attorney.
So we should maybe have a workshop with them or have a meeting with them somehow to inform them of how the process works. And maybe have them sit down with Warren and have a conversation with him about the expectations, the responsibilities, the roles and responsibilities that they're taking on. I think there needs to be some clarification and guidance.
We have three seats open on that board, because the law also doesn't allow for reappointments, which I didn't realize. I just recently read the law.
So it's probably good for all of us, as every pressure, to have a meeting with Warren and the board, so we all understand her. Because I couldn't answer her questions either, so, so, yeah.
You certainly can. I think we've had, since I've been on the board, two questions to the Ethics Committee in five years.
But it's still an important board.
Yes, no, that's true.
And maybe, maybe they would bring more to us if they knew how the process works, or maybe they don't know what they're supposed to do.
I think we refer things to them. We, we refer questions to them. They don't bring things to us.
I think it'd be, things from the outside could come to them, too. I mean, I would imagine that somebody from the outside public could bring something to their attention.
I think you have to read the law.
Well, I think we all need some education on it. I don't disagree with that at all, myself included. In fact, I think a meeting with Warren and, and the Ethics members would be a very good idea.
Good place to start is to read the resolution and the law.
Absolutely. But I think a meeting, listen, I mean, when, when somebody comes to me from one of our boards and says, I don't understand how the process works, I think it's important to recognize that. I think as a board, we're, you know, that's part of what we do. And I think we need to respond to that. And I think having a meeting with our county attorney so that they're clear would be really helpful, especially because legalese isn't easy for the average person to understand. I mean, I really think they need to be able to ask questions.
Well, I'm, I'm clear on how it works, so I'll just state that I'm pretty up to speed. So if you're not, that's fine. I'm happy to, you know, to participate in anything, but-
And I think the members of the Ethics Board, I think they should be given an opportunity to have a meeting with Warren.
We have two members, so maybe we should wait until we appoint three.
Yeah, we could do that, for sure. But I think at some point, that needs to happen.
Great. Anything else?
Right. No, I, I don't disagree. You certainly can have a meeting. But let me point out that all the members of the Ethics Board, other than one, are attorneys. So presumably, they should be capable of reading a statute.
Yeah, but attorneys specialize in some things that are attorneys specialize in others. Just because you're an attorney doesn't mean you understand every, every section of law that exists under each category of law. I mean, a real estate attorney isn't gonna be able to answer bankruptcy questions necessarily.
Right. But any attorney should be able to read a four or five-page statute.
But it's not just that.
We don't have to prolong-
They're still gonna have questions based on real estate.
We don't have to prolong a meeting, you know, a meeting, but-
We should be open and we should, we should be like helping in areas where people are asking for help. They're volunteers.
Right. But if the-
And they have their own jobs.
If the three attorneys or four attorneys on the board can't understand, who our lawyers can't understand it, then I don't know what they expect from this board.
Well, let me, and just some advice. If someone comes to you, the first thing, the first thing you do is you pull the resolution and the law establishing it. That answers your questions.
Oh, absolutely. But, but they should be able to ask questions to Warren and have the questions answered. I'm not, I'm not sure where the resistance is coming from. I think they should be able to have that afforded to them, especially if that's the person that they need to contact to answer questions. They don't even know that.
I don't think there's resistance. I think it's just guidance on how you can get answers for yourself if you're not from them.
Myself is one thing. But I'd like to be part of that meeting. I'm, I'm suggesting, I'd like a sit-down, too, to be able to just ask questions and have them answered. And I know that they would, too. So whether it happens, we wait for more people to be appointed, that's fine.
We don't even have a forum, so.
Right. But I, but I think when that happens, it needs to happen. And we should have. I mean, I think we're mandated by state law to have the correct number of people on that board. I'm pretty sure that's the case. I think I learned that in a meeting that I went to with the Association of Towns. It's a pretty important board, according to the state. So, you know, I, I remember having that discussion last year at the training, and I remember being mindful of that. So when this came up, it really ported my radar, because I thought, you know, this is something, you know, needs to pay attention to and make sure that they're informed about their goals and responsibilities, and have questions answered if they have questions.
We have one applicant who wrote the law for us, so he should be able to understand the legalese if we appoint him.
No one is resisting the idea that we can have a sit-down with Warren and whoever we appoint. There's no problem with that. Clearly, if they have questions, it should be addressed to Warren.
Right.
So I think we're beating it to death. You should stop beating the horse.
I just want the meeting, that's all.
Is it time for public comment? No, we're not done with your business yet. I just wanted to bring up, bring this back up. The letter about the E-911 addressing, just make a motion to approve this being mailed with tax bills. It's gonna be modified by, in a small grammar correction, the fact that we haven't passed the law yet, enabling the enforcement officer fines. I'll say, is, in the second paragraph, we'll say the town Rhineback Board is passing a local law rather than has passed.
I think I had two comments early, on a draft that I saw earlier. Did you want to put in here when they would have to start complying with this? Do we want a date for compliance, or is that not necessary? And do we want to say what the fine, the county law lays out a fine?
Yeah.
Are we going to be adopting that same fine? Do we want to say that, or no? Because I'm just thinking that this sort of serves as their only notice of what the local law will be.
Okay. I mean, the, the county law authorized a $50 fine for first offense with escalating numbers. I think-
You think we could say we're passing the law, and then this will, do we, do we want a date of when people have to start complying, or?
I think, yeah, I was gonna say, I think we ought to wait on that. I think we ought to get this letter out as is. And then we can consider the amount of fines, have a hearing as to what it should be, and if they, but let's see what kind of compliance.
The way I envisioned doing this was to send a letter out, and then if people were in violation, they should get a letter that says you have 90 days to comply, or whatever we decide to give them.
Does the law state we have to notify them? That's a ton of work for the enforcement officer. We have part-time people.
No, no, just the, the people that are in violation.
Right. What I'm saying is, do the laws, does the law say that we have to notify people by letter? We have part-time staff. That would be a huge burden on the enforcement officer, presumably be our code enforcement officer or our zoning-
How else are we gonna collect fines?
I don't know what the law says.
Well, that's why at this point, we should just pass, tap the letter in, and then we can, when we have more time, consider whether we have a fine, whether the town adopts a fine system, and how would we enforce it. Certainly legitimate question with any laws to how it gets enforced. But I would get this out in the tax bills.
Okay. Did we want, you want to make a motion for, and I'll second it, for approving this letter, sending it out in our taxes?
Yeah, I approve this letter, as, as amended in the way we discussed.
All in favor?
Yay, very well.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye, yes.
So moved. Thanks for doing this.
I noticed Warren did it, and my daily put shadows under these things.
Right. Any public comment on non-agenda items?
Glad you asked. Happy New Year. Come bearing gifts, if I wanted each of those. First, I want to invite everybody- First, I want to invite everybody. We're doing our fourth repair cafe. It's happening this Saturday from noon to 4:00 P.M. And the first time we have somebody who's going to be here to fix watches. A guy named Rafael Delgado and his son Santiago. They fix watches for free and tune guitars for free. The guy owns the shop we fish, it's called WatchFrenel.com. So, if you or anybody you know has watches that need to be fixed, bring them here this Saturday, the 17th of January, noon, 4:00 P.M., regular town hall. We also have a licensed massage therapist, Valerie Leger, L-M-T-L-E. Your Kathleen Everett and Sarah Stevens, who are going to be sewing, ditting, mending, healing clothing. Terry Nelson, who's a demon in a wonderful way, fixing lamps, woodworking. Ken Douglas on furniture and everything. Chris Louie and Chris Tyrell on household appliances, bikes, musical instruments, you name it. So, so there you go. The computer guide that we've had for the last year cannot make it, so we may not be able to do computers or electronics this Saturday. We had a huge influx of people for the last one in October, so we could always use more help. If you or anybody you know knows how to fix stuff, then you're free this Saturday afternoon. Because what happened in October, there were about 20 people sitting here and we only had about six or seven repair groups.
Joe, let me ask you a question. I noticed that you're hosting it, but why is the Ryenbeck Conservation Board hosting this? Why are we into it? And what kind of liability do we have if your watchmaker screws up a watch?
That stems from, I can take that off if you want. That stems from last spring when I reached out to Gary Catton and Jess Scott. And Jess was instrumental in getting a lot of her friends involved in this, so.
That's fine, but I don't think there should be any sponsorship.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. That's, that's fine. It's just, we wanted to credit where credit is due, but I can take that one. Okay. Also, you may have gotten the flyer, this Wednesday, we're having another new economy, Hot Luck. We had a couple dozen people here last month. There's a guy named David McCarthy. He's co-founded a local currency. There's 150 businesses participating already. It's called the Austin Valley Current. The website is hbcurrent.org. We're talking about all sort of kind of innovative new economy things. One innovative thing that we're talking about has actually been recommended by the Northern Dutchess Alliance since 2008. It's called LOIS, locally-owned import substitution, trying to make sure that businesses and institutions and governments of Dutch County purchase stuff that's made locally. We can help spur worker-owned enterprises and microenterprises and local business by redirecting purchasing. Anyway, so it's this Wednesday, 6:00 P.M. here at town hall. And just, there's been a lot, there's been a lot of stuff thrown around. I'm sorry I was not able to, I don't think I was able to get here in December. There's been a lot of back and forth on the county budget. Just so you know, one of the reasons why I voted against the county budget is, on the average, it actually raises the county property tax rate from $3.65 per $1,000 of assessed value to $3.68 per $1,000 of assessed value. The Catholic Church in town, the Church of the Good Shepherd serves as, there's about eight or nine different senior friendship centers for the county office for that aging. And I've been fighting a good fight for about five years now to bring back the five-day week for the senior friendship centers. It's been operating on a four-day week. How much would it cost to bring that back? $230,000 a year. $230,000 a year is half the money they added to the tourism budget. I believe in tourism, but for many, many years, the tourism budget has been $600,000 a year, $600,000 a year. So, I don't understand why all of a sudden the tourism budget has to go over $1 million and we're still on a four-day week at the senior friendship center.
Because the county collects our sales tax now.
And, and, and again, you look at Clarkston, Esopis and Skidnaugtie County, they are saving incredible amounts of money, no money down solar. They got solar landfills. I just, I want to take this opportunity, there's about 10 or 11 sentences here. There's a letter that five of us, actually six of us in the legislature signed last Tuesday. And you want to talk about saving money? This is a huge money saver. We could avoid a $100 million, $200 million jail expansion. We could save money on housing costs. Check this out. We, the underside members of the Dutch County Legislature, strongly urge you, County Executive Mark Malonera, to work with us to make sure that Dutch County follows the incredibly successful cost-saving example below of Miami-Dade County's judicial criminal mental health project to divert nonviolent mentally ill folks from being arrested and then being necessarily locked up at great expense of the Dutch County Jail. For instance, Miami-Dade County, 18,000 people that divert each year from even going to jail to begin with in the first place. As USA Today reported, December 22nd, it's just a couple weeks ago. Quote, "Last year, crisis intervention teams in Miami-Dade County and the city of Miami responded to more than 10,000 mental illness-related calls, yet made only nine arrests." 10,000 mental illness-related calls, nine arrests. Police referred one-third of the people involved in these calls to crisis stabilization units, freestanding emergency psychiatric facilities for short-term stays. For those who are arrested, jail psychiatrists screen inmates for mental illness and refer those who appear ill to social workers. Judges can arrange for inmates to be transferred out of jail into a crisis stabilization unit where inmates can be treated up for up to two weeks, Leifman said. Once they are stabilized, about 80% of defendants agree to treat them. From that same article from USA Today, because inmates with mental illness are often homeless, program staffers help them get stable housing, apply for Medicaid, disability payments. Many inmates, many inmates have benefits arranged by the time they leave jail. Since Leifman's program began, a fraction of people with a serious mental illness who are rearrested for a misdemeanor within a year has fallen from 72% to 20%. Altogether, Judge Stephen Leifman's programs have helped reduce the jail census from 7,800 inmates at a time to 4,800, allowing Miami-Dade County to close one of its jails at a savings of $12 million a year. The county has funneled some of the money back to the Leifman's program. It goes on and on. I don't know if you know this, even the Dutch County Criminal Justice Council says 80% of the people in Dutch County Jail have substance abuse or mental health issues. And as Deborah Blaylock, my former county legislator's seatmate, pointed out, just about half the people being arrested in Dutch County have drug addiction problems. If we don't do, and the Miami-Dade County model has been held up as the gold standard across the country for many years. If we don't do this, we are heck bent for leather on a new $100, $200 million jail and there will never be a return to that sales tax revenue. So, I just urge people, I didn't even know about this until the front page of USA Today, the weekend edition, pointed this out. That's all. Thank you for your forbearance. I'm working with Ryenbeck Village Board Member Scott Crookshank. I'm getting a law passed in Dutch County, like to have in Ulster County, as far as they call it, local law respecting the outdoor restraint of companion animals, 10-foot tether minimum, food, water shelter, buckle collar, not a choke collar, six months old at least, only 12 hours in a 24-hour period, not during weather alert. And also Albany County just passed this law to ban toxic toys. Antimony, arsenic, cobalt, cadmium, lead, mercury is still being found in things like Hot Wheels in Westchester County and Albany County. And I just got nine county legislators to sign a letter on that. And so, hopefully, Dutch County might be the second or third county to do that. Thank you for your patience. I'm sorry I couldn't make it here in December. Happy New Year.
Thanks, Joe.
762-488-4642, 2245.
Thank you, Joe. Any further comment or questions from the public? I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment of a particular individual. May I have a second? Thank you.